If I switch over to documents, that's why I told you this is going to be a little clunky for me.
Okay.
We'll, we'll work through it, but in order to keep, keep rolling here. So, uh, welcome everyone to this planning board meeting. Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. Uh, this is our second online Zoom meeting. And first item of the day is a roll call. Uh, tonight we have Krista Schwitzer, we have Dave Thompson, we have Joe Sprecker, we've got John Beckett, we've got Mike Costello, uh, Judd McIntosh, and Lisa Buck is absent. That covers everybody, right?
Yep.
All right, I'll keep moving. Uh, next up, acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, one item, just to consider, we do not know how long, uh, three out of the four items are going to take. So I spoke with Kyle and we're going to see whether we can bump old business 4B, the, the land use ordinance that, that we put off, I think before, but that, that has a little, little less urgency. So if we get to it tonight, great. Uh, if we don't, uh, any opposition to moving that down to, uh, below 5B?
No.
All right. Well, very good. So next up, approval of the minutes of the May 20, 2020 meeting. Any comments? I did notice one. Joe, uh, your name is spelled wrong on the, on the attendee list. And just on, uh, the board members that attended, it was correct later, I believe. I didn't have any other comments. Krista, were you? You're our go-to. Oops. Need to unmute. We can't hear you.
Okay, here we go.
Perfect.
Um, and you're visible now.
Yeah, it, it might be that way. And Judd, you're a resident tech geek, but I mean, if I'm going to be switching between Google Docs and this, I'm, I'm a little lame with Zoom.
Okay. So anyway, on the minutes, uh, at the top, at least what I downloaded, it said, planning board agenda. It's actually minutes. And then at the bottom of page one, um, it looks like the sentence is incomplete. It says Verizon Wireless to place equipment within the steeple of the blank. And then, uh, on page four, and we sort of have the same thing a couple of other places, um, in the middle. Sort of after it says seconded, John Beckett, and then the next thing's, uh, little paragraph ends with, that vote was unanimous, but it doesn't really tell us unanimous what. So I think it should say that vote to approve was, the motion was unanimous. We could have all voted against it and it could have still been.
Good point, good point.
We know we didn't. Okay, and we have the same thing, uh, on page five near the bottom. I think Jessica can find it. And then we have essentially the same thing on page six near the top. And that's a lot of minutes and you really got a lot of details in there, Jessica.
Yes, some job. Very good. So don't mind if I step away. So we, with those changes, uh, we had a motion, we had a, or I guess, have we had the motion to approve the minutes as amended? If not, can I have one?
Some move.
Is that you, Judd? Did I see a hand go up?
Yep, some move.
All right. Very good. We have a motion, we have a second, uh, as amended, all those in favor, thumbs up. And Jessica, just procedurally, last time, so just the basic approvals, can we do thumbs up, thumbs down? If we need a formal vote, can I ask you for roll call? Did, that seemed to work well last time. Is, are we okay with that?
So Phil?
Yeah.
This is, um, Belle. Uh, any votes that are going to actually be recorded have to be by roll call because,
I wondered, yeah.
You're, unfortunately, the final recorded product only shows the, the speaker. So it won't show thumbs up and thumbs down. So there would be no, even no visual record or anything of the vote. So.
Okay.
The other way you can do it is, um, it's a move, it's approved, less doubted, so that for these type of votes, you could say, you have a motion and a second, does anybody oppose the movement? And then hearing none, I, um, pronounce the movement approved, or the motion approved.
Last time, and I'll just further this. So when we got to findings of fact, there are some items where I can see everybody on the screen and I just asked them, so just, you know, are there any issues, something like that, either thumbs up or thumbs down. And if I see all thumbs up, that isn't actually a vote, but it's how we were able to step through without going to Jessica and calling for a formal roll for every single item like that. That would have taken a long time.
And I think you're fine with that because it's not, that's not where the formal vote is.
Yep, okay.
So I think you can continue doing that. It's the, um, it's when you take a, a motion and a second, and then you need to have a vote that you actually have to either say, um, it's approved, less doubted, or, um, a roll call vote.
All right, uh, yeah, we've got, so we already went by the, the agenda and, and voted that way. Jessica, you're up. Just do a, a roll call. We don't have that many people. Please, and don't forget your mics.
This is for the minutes?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Joe?
Yes, approved.
Mike?
Yes.
Sorry, my hands aren't very fast today. Krista?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Dave?
Affirmative.
And Phil?
Yes. Very good. All right, uh, again, you guys got to bear with me. You're probably just going to see a blank screen when I shift over, but I have to go back to the agenda. Bear with me. All right, uh, next up, uh, under old business, we have a continuation of a minor site plan review application for an accessory use at 36 Oak Street that would allow Verizon Wireless to place equipment within the steeple of the structure. We have the applicant here this evening that can, uh, provide us an update on, on what you proposed.
I'm just verifying with Belle that one of the applicants for this project has speaking power currently.
I could barely hear you when you spoke.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I was just verifying, uh, that one of the applicants has the book that you're in now, so I think it was, okay. Scott Anderson, I think will be doing the speaking.
Yes, success. Thanks, Kyle. All right, and, and can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Scott Anderson. I'm an attorney down at Veraldana down in Portland, and I'm here tonight, uh, along with Steve Del Sono, with Structure Consulting Group. Uh, Steve and I work together on, uh, local permitting for Verizon Wireless sites in the state of Maine. And what we were hoping to do, uh, tonight, um, by way of a kind of an update, I think this is actually our first, uh, meeting with you face to face. So we wanted to do four things in addition to, um, taking any of your questions and, and hearing any questions from the public. One, briefly go through the project components for the site. Two, we've also provided some information on the anticipated coverage from the site along with some RF emissions data, um, showing what the energy emissions will be from the antennas, because we know there has been some questions and interest from the public on that topic. We'd also like to talk a little bit about the location of the equipment installation, because that particular item is, is kind of in, in motion. Um, and then answer any questions, um, that the board may have on any aspects of the project. Feel free to raise a hand, um, uh, as I'm going if you have questions, um, but I'll just jump, uh, jump right into it, Mr. Chairman, if that works. So Verizon is proposing to do what we call a stealth installation, um, at the United Methodist Church at 36 Oak Street downtown. I should also say that I'm going to be keeping an eye on Steve Del Sono's, uh, mute button. So if I stray from the facts at all, I'm confident he will reel me in and jump right in. And Steve, you should feel free, feel free to do so. So this is an installation in the church, um, steeple. Um, I think you have a copy of the site plan that Steve had sent along. The most helpful page to look at, if you want to kind of go along with the document, is sheet A2 in the site plan, where it shows a, a side view of the church and is a good kind of, uh, a format to take a look and talk about the different components of the site. There are really two main, um, areas that are associated with the project. The first, um, you can see the antennas will be located inside the church steeple itself. After the antennas are installed, we place special panels around the outside that allow the signal, um, to go, uh, through the steeple, but they are painted and matched to look like the existing church steeple. So after the installation is in, um, uh, no one will know that the antennas are in there and the church steeple will appear the way it currently looks. Um, at the back of the church is the equipment installation. This is a, a small area on a concrete pad surrounded by a fence, and there are a couple of critical items that are in that equipment installation. There is a backup battery in the event of a power outage. But most importantly, there is a cabinet that contains the telecommunications equipment and the, the equipment that generates the signal and receives the signal and makes the, the facility actually work. The antennas themselves are wonderful, uh, but they don't do anything without all the equipment that makes them turn on and, and receive and send signals. So, um, all of the connections between those antennas in the steeple will run essentially through the attic or the building, eventually going outside. Um, all of the wiring, both power and the telecommunications signals will be running in underground wires to the location of the equipment, um, installation. The equipment installation, again, is surrounded by, um, a fence. Um, there is a fan that helps to cool, um, one of the, of the cabinets, but other than that, these new Verizon installations are much quieter and much smaller than some of the ones you may have seen a decade or so ago, when we used to bring in these very, very large, um, equipment shelters that were 20 feet long and 10 feet high, and all of the equipment was inside there. Now Verizon has essentially, uh, opened those up and has installed the equipment directly on the ground. So we're able to avoid the big, uh, equipment shelters that we used to use. The goal with these types of facilities is after construction leaves and the fence is up and the fancy panels are on the church steeple, if you didn't know this was going in, you would walk by the church and you would have absolutely no idea that, um, the, um, the, the steeple was generating an improved cellphone signal. So that's the goal for the, for the project and the different, um, components. Moving on, we had, uh, provided just recently some information about coverage from the site. Technically this because we are, I think, being treated as an accessory use of antennas inside. We're not subject to all requirements of the wireless ordinance, but we always think it is helpful to provide the board and the public with information showing improved cellphone coverage, um, as a result of the installation of the project. So, um, you have in your packet, uh, a radio frequency report done by C squared systems. That is, um, lots of pages and tables, but the, the most helpful stuff, I think, in the back are some of the coverage sheets that show areas in, um, yellow and green. Um, and we've provided you with both the before and after, um, coverage plots that show what happens after these antennas are turned on. And if you look at the before, the yellow and green are kind of different, um, frequencies that are associated with the Verizon Wireless signal. And, um, you can see in the downtown area, there are areas of white that are kind of here and there. Those are areas where we, um, decide that there's not sufficient, um, coverage. Um, and so when you look at, you flip the page to the, the after, um, after the, the, um, the antennas are installed, you see that a lot of that white area is replaced by green or yellow, um, and, um, that coverage will improve in the downtown area with the installation of this facility. Um, these church sites work particularly well when you are trying to do what we're doing here, which is we have a kind of a concentrated and defined area where the cellphone coverage is not adequate, and we're looking to strengthen, um, that signal. Church steeples don't work if they're in the middle of a rural area separated by miles from the, uh, associated towers, because the antennas right here are very, very low at about 50 feet. But when we're in a downtown area like this, the elevation is perfect and, um, it can be a great fill-in site, which is what we have right here. So, um, after the, the site is installed, um, not only is there going to be better coverage in this area, but one of the plots, um, that are shown later on in the RF report that shows a bunch of, um, multiple colors here. This chart is important because it shows the coverage from some of the, the towers in the vicinity that exists already, including out at UMO, um, uh, one in Eddington, another one in Orano, and one in Old Town. The benefit of adding, adding this site is not only will it generate a signal that helps, but it will help take some of the load off of the other existing towers that are right now struggling to provide coverage in the downtown area. Um, this is also good for your cellphones. Right now, when you're downtown with your Verizon phone and it's trying to pick up one of these towers farther away, your phone ramps up and tries to boost its signal to communicate with the towers farther away. When we add a fill-in site like this and it strengthens the network in this area, your phone actually calms down, doesn't generate, doesn't burn the battery power quite as much, because it's able to connect to a, a tower that's much closer. So for both the operation of the phones, the access, um, to data, the, the balancing of the entire system, this site is doing all of those things, and we think, um, it will do all of those things quite well. We also wanted to provide, we know that this is in a downtown populated area with lots of people. There's residential areas, and it's entirely appropriate to ask, how does this facility comply with the RF emission standards that are set by the FCC and the EPA? So we've also provided the, um, calculated frequency emissions report, um, um, for, for your review. Again, a lot of data and a lot of tables, um, but I always go, uh, to the punchline, uh, towards the back, which, um, shows, um, a chart of, uh, expected readings through a number of different locations, and those locations are shown with little green dots on the plan. Um, basically, this site will be generating, um, emissions that run from about 9.8% to below 2%, um, depending on where you are. And so the maximum emissions at this site, I think it's about 250 feet away, are less than 10% of the, um, the allowable emissions, um, for a wireless facility. There's also a chart that shows what happens after you get more than 300 or 400 feet away. The figures drop way down to 2% or 3%. Um, and I guess the big takeaway here is that the emissions from this facility are extremely, extremely low. We do lots of, um, new, new tower sites in which emissions down at the bottom are in the kind of low twenties or the high teens. But this is a facility in which the emission levels are going to be below 10%. So they are, um, very, very low and well below the standards that kind of regulate these installations. And then once you get 200, 250, 300 feet away from the steeple, those figures are dropping, uh, to below 3 and then 2, and then quickly start to, to, to cruise in on 0 as you get farther away from the facility. So that's RF, um, the coverage and kind of the benefits of the site and some of the emissions. The other item that we're working on, and we have appreciated Kyle's feedback on this. Um, as everyone knows, this entire lot is within the shoreline zone, and between the building itself and the parking lot, it's fair to say that this site is overt. It's 20% non-vegetated cap, uh, for this particular shoreline zoning district. So, um, Steve has been working with the church to relocate the equipment onto a portion of the parking lot. Um, and, and in doing so, we will not be creating any additional impervious surface. We'll just be essentially putting it on top of existing developed and non-vegetated surface. So we won't be altering the percentage of, of coverage, um, and we'll be able to comply with the 20% cap and the other rules applicable to construction in, um, the shoreline zone. So, in, in other words, the plan that you have before you, um, is a great one to do an introductory discussion, but obviously we have to go through this, uh, the steps with the engineers and with the, the church to get the sighting of the equipment, uh, down before we can ask you to take any final action on this application. But we are working on that, um, as we speak, and, uh, will be working on a revised plan that we can bring back for the board's review at a subsequent meeting. The last item that I just wanted to kind of talk about generally has to do with how your ordinance works, because I know this is a, this is a new provision. Uh, normally wireless telecommunications facilities would not be a permitted use in the zoning district. Um, the town recently amended the wireless ordinance to permit, um, as an accessory use, antennas that are installed inside. That is a very common provision. You see it in a lot of towns, and the reason why towns do this is because, um, people object to towers, they object to visible building-mounted antennas, um, because you can see them. And that's often why they are regulated and limited to certain zoning districts and prohibited from others. But the idea is that once you can hide the antennas and avoid a tower altogether, then the primary kind of objection or concern with a wireless facility goes away, because no one will see the antennas. There won't be a tower, the whole thing will be hidden inside of the steeple, um, and therefore there are no visual impacts. And Orano has taken kind of the same path, which is to say, okay, if you do that and there's no tower and you put your antennas where we'll never see them, you can go, um, in, in, uh, any of the locations provided that it's an industrial or commercial structure and it's in a, and it's in a accessory use. So, um, this installation is clearly accessory to the use of this facility as a church. We're thrilled to be able to work with the church and it gets some, from this, and the town gets a better signal. But this will be an accessory use to that, um, the primary use. Um, and the, um, you know, sometimes a question comes up, but what about the equipment? Does the equipment have to be hidden completely too? We think the answer is no, again, because the idea is it's the antennas and the towers that you will avoid with using an existing structure that are the benefit, that allow these to go in all zoning districts. Um, and provided as the ordinance, uh, states, provided the antennas are located inside the structure, it can then be permitted as an accessory use, and we think we meet that, um, definition and that requirement. That, uh, was kind of the big picture items that we wanted to cover with the board. Steve and I are here to answer any questions that you may have, um, and to also to listen to any public comment that you've received, or, uh, for folks that are joining this evening. As I noted, we'll be working with the church on a refined drawing, uh, relocating the equipment facilities, but certainly, um, are interested in your thoughts and questions right now, so we can continue to make sure we're providing you with all the information you need to ultimately make a decision on this project. I'm going to turn briefly to Steve to make sure there isn't anything that he thinks that I missed, and then, Mr. Chairman, we'll turn it back to you.
Uh, hi, everybody. Uh, Scott, you did a great job. Um, I have nothing further to add. I can also, I could always add anything if, um, questions, you know, happen to come up and, you know, I happen to know the answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So initial questions from the board. I'm just going to talk about procedure for the folks tuning in. You know, applicant will describe, you know, what, what they're proposing, uh, some brief questions from board members. We, we were, uh, given a review of the application by town staff, and I'm going to ask Kyle to, uh, weigh in on that, to describe the issues that the board will discuss. Then we, I understand we did receive some public comment, and those can be read into the record, and then I can open up the public hearing. So just bear with us while we do some of the initial steps. Uh, but board members, by all means, uh, if you have initial questions from, from what we just heard. I just wanted to ask a question. I saw in the, some of the narrative there that maybe there was discussion to put the equipment inside, obviously. Just, uh, not voting yet, but obviously just talking aloud. I think if the whole thing was completely stealthed, there'd be a lot less objection, and it would protect the equipment more. So I was just curious if there was any more discussion about that. So, thank you.
And we, and Mr. Chairman, if you would like me to wait till there, jump right in, how, let me know how you'd like to go, because we can jump right in and answer them as they come up.
Uh, why don't, you know, some of these are going to be big picture items. I think that's going to be a pretty common question. So by all means, you, you can address that now, and then maybe that'll, uh, solve some, some questions later. So.
Okay, great. Thanks. Yeah, and, and so when we realized we had the issue with the 20%, Steve's been working with the church both on an inside and outside option. The challenge with the inside option is, uh, there's a, first of all, there's always kind of space considerations. But the other issue is that when Verizon goes about identifying one of these sites, they do a fairly comprehensive environmental assessment, um, um, of, of the installation to make sure that we're not going to bump into anything or dig up anything or trigger anything. So, um, in this situation, moving the equipment inside would essentially mean that Steve would have to go back to the beginning, which is about an 18-month process of going through with, you can imagine the size of Verizon and their internal processes to go through that to get authorization to move the equipment inside. So that would be a significant delay in the project. Uh, the benefits of the project, you know, obviously would be delayed because of that as well. Um, and so, um, what we're trying to do is, um, locate it to a, a space on the parking lot, so we don't have the issue with the shoreline zoning. Um, but Joseph, it's a good question, you know, about the impact of the installation. We're proposing to put a fence. If we can locate it in a way with some additional vegetation and the like, um, usually we are able to successfully kind of hide the equipment as well, that it's not a very large installation, and we're sensitive to the fact that folks would really like to see everything shielded, and, and that would be our goal as well.
Very good. Thank you. Any other, any other initial questions?
Is there any thought when 5G comes in and we'll just turn to a 5G location?
That's a great question. Um, right now, there are no plans to go with 5G in Orano. I, I don't know if that's good news or bad news, but that, that's where we are. So the installation that we have right now is going to be the regular 4G antennas. Um, it's a great question, because, um, if we were to come back and upgrade the site to 5G, we would have to replace the antennas with different antennas, which from our perspective means we have to come back to the planning board, because it would be a change and an approved plan and an amendment. Um, and so that would give the board and the public and everybody else to ask all the kind of questions that come in whenever we have a 5G site.
Very good. Any other, uh, quick questions before we turn it over to Kyle? Right, Kyle, you're up. Could you, uh, summarize the, the issues that, that, uh, board needs to discuss this evening?
Sure. Uh, so Scott mentioned, uh, some of the big ones. I'm just covering some of the basic site plan criteria. Quickly upfront, um, I mean, this lot, it's located in the village commercial. It's also in the limited commercial shoreline zoning district. Um, it is.
Kyle, quick point. Sorry, you're a little, little choppy. I'm not sure if others hear that. Could, could be just me, but.
Hello, now, is that right?
Uh, still a little choppy. I, I doubt it's going to record well, but.
Kyle, you may want to check which microphone is picking it up. Um, on the, if you go to your, um, mute button and click the carrot, it'll give you microphone options if you have any options, and maybe a different microphone would help.
It was fine for a little bit, but then, then you get back into the, the choppy language. That sounded worse to me.
All right, well.
That's, that was good.
Okay, well, it's back to where it started, so maybe.
There we go. We'll go with it.
All right. So as I was saying, it's in both the village commercial as far as townwide zoning and limited commercial shoreline zoning districts. The lot is considered to be a legal lot. This is a use that would not impact any, you know, any new need for utility capacity. There would be no additional traffic or parking required because of it. So any sort of site plan review criteria in relation to those types of things isn't really relevant here. As Scott alluded to, some of the, there's really three issues that came up during the process. One had to do with the concern that some members of the public had over perceived health concerns from RF emissions. The Telecommunications Act 1996 has a section that states no state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions. So we reached out to the town attorney just to verify, you know, kind of the, the meaning behind that. And that really, what it boils down to is that so long as the, the antennas, the project isn't, you know, creating emissions above those, those guidelines set by the FCC, that the town cannot deny a project like this based on, you know, any perceived health impacts or environmental impacts from, from those emissions. So that was really one of the, the major issues that sort of got resolved in that way. Second, it is in the shoreline zone, which, you know, requires that, you know, there not being any exceeding of 20% of the lot, the impervious cover. Scott mentioned one of the possibilities is to move that equipment area to an already paved area as it would not then count towards creating new impervious cover. So what, and that would solve the shoreline issue if you were just looking at that issue. So really the, the biggest remaining thing for the board to consider and what I was hoping, you know, the, all the board members could have a discussion about is the, the exemption that was created for telecommunications facilities like this. So in general, wireless telecommunications facilities are not an allowable use in the village commercial district. So, you know, you couldn't, you put a new tower right in the downtown. However, there was an exemption created for, you know, the way the exemption is worded states, back to it so I can get the exact wording. It's antennas as accessory uses, an antenna licensed by the FCC that is an accessory use to a commercial or institutional use and located entirely within an existing enclosed structure. And so the, the kind of issue that came up is what do you consider that equipment area that's located outside of the church? You know, the antennas are obviously exempt from being considered a telecommunications facility because it's located inside, but the equipment area, you know, that directly is connected and is necessary for the whole thing to operate is located outside of the structure. Now, if you think of, you know, a residential area and someone has a single family home and they want to start operating a restaurant as a accessory use, that wouldn't be allowed because restaurants aren't allowed in the residential district. So even though it's an accessory use, it's still not allowed because the accessory use is a restaurant. But on the other hand, if someone has just some equipment outside of their house or a commercial business like a dumpster or, you know, some other small piece of equipment that aids in the function of the business or the house, it may be allowed because that thing might not be considered an actual land use. So for instance, a, a commercial business might have a dumpster out in the parking lot that's shielded by a fence or whatever and that, but that dumpster isn't an actual land use in our ordinance. It's not considered its own use. It's just a piece of equipment that's outside. So this really boils down to what you consider that piece of equipment area outside. Is it just a supporting piece of equipment that is not its own use or is it considered to be part of a telecommunications facility in which case telecommunications facilities aren't allowed in this district unless they're inside the structure? So that's really the conversation I was hoping that the board had as this is something that's new and there isn't really any precedence in the town. You know, staff was just looking for, for feedback on the interpretation of that. I would say that what Scott said about the intent of the ordinance, where the intent really was to a visual thing, you know, the intent was to, you know, when you read our wireless telecommunications section of our ordinance, it's very clear that most of the standards at section relate to visual concerns. When we were allowing, allowing these types of facilities to exist, accessory uses, the intent of having them be located inside was to not create any sort of visual impact in a, you know, highly populated area. So the fact that the equipment area would be fenced in, located in back of the church does kind of aim in, you know, succeeding in the intent of the ordinance, but it's sort of a matter of, again, and the specific wording and how, how that language in the ordinance is interpreted by the board members.
Thank you, Kyle. It does seem like a couple of the, the major concerns, the switch from 5G to 4G, based on the percentages that I, that I saw seem to be well below the FCC guidelines and according to our town attorney, that, that's not something that, that we can, I guess, be more, more strict. So any thoughts on what Kyle mentioned, the discussion before we get public comments read into the record and open it up for, for other comments? Anybody want to weigh in on, on that issue? Joe, I know you asked about, the applicant about that, but just first thoughts on accessory structure versus telecommunications facility? What do you, what do you think?
Well, it looks like they're, they're square footage, you know, not much at all. 200 square feet, you're looking at 165, the pad itself. Typical parking space can be about 200 square feet. So they're really talking about size of about two, two parking spaces. I guess that's the biggest concern, I would assume with most folks, like you said visually. If this is a 50 by 50 equipment pad, 2,500 square feet would be a huge eyesore visual problem. So I think if we, if we wanted to set some kind of standard, it would be like, how, what is the size that would be, you know, allowable? And in my mind, like a 20 by 20 would be, two parking spaces would be about the, the maximum that certainly would fit in, the current proposal would fit within that. And I don't know if, if we want to set that kind of thing, but that's my, my only concern. And I would think that, again, if the thing could be completely stealthed, great, but totally understand if it's 18 months to get approval and redo this, by that time, maybe there's a 5G, 5G plan and different equipment, you know, so.
Phil, you were muted if you said something.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate the comment. Any other comments before we open it up? Mike?
Yeah, the, the site is unique. Probably being behind the church, it would be hard to object to that, that facility on the parking lot area, but would we be setting a precedence by allowing this there if someone else wants to put a tower someplace else in the city and then wants to put it outside structure at the same time? Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, thanks, Mike.
Sorry, just with the, if a different project were to come forward with a different equipment area footprint and the decision was made one way here, then it would logically make sense, that same logic for the next project that came along, so.
Other comments?
I had a question for Kyle and then a possible comment. So that exception, this exception is only in the village district zone, correct? It's only in the village, village commercial district? That's where this exists exclusively?
No, no, it's exemptions are townwide.
They are, okay.
But it's specific to commercial or institutional use.
So meaning that this exception would not, you know, somebody couldn't use it in HDR, MDR or FNA, they, no one could use this or LDR, no one could use this accessory, this exception in other zones? Is that what you're telling me? They could only use it in the commercial zone?
No, I'm, I was saying the opposite. It would, you would be eligible to use, just like there's a, there's a number of exemptions. Some of them are, you know, very small scale, allowing, you know, residential satellite dishes to, there is telecommunications facilities, things like that.
So.
All the exemptions are townwide, they would be allowed in.
Right. So my, my concern with this is that if we allow this, let's say someone has a large house that's three stories tall, we're now allowing someone to put an antenna inside because we're interpreting this, this essentially exception as you just have to hide the antenna, you don't have to hide the equipment. That's how we'd be interpreting this at that point. So as long as I can hide the antenna within my structure, if I have a 20 by 20, you know, outside structure that goes up to support that antenna at my house, that's legal, right?
So I would just say that the exemption only applies to commercial and institutional uses, doesn't apply to residential uses. A project like this would never be able to go inside a residential structure.
Okay. So that's what I was after. So you would only be like, you could only use it in the MDR, LDR or FNA if there was already a pre-approved commercial.
Right.
You know, installation there. Okay, all right. That's, that was my concern was I didn't want this to broadly apply to any structure. Did we? And then, so we didn't decide to ask the lawyer how he would interpret this because when I read this and I read it literally, it does kind of indicate that I just have to hide, I only have to hide the antenna. I don't have to hide anything else. But it is a little weird to say you just have to hide the antenna. I don't care if you have this huge structure supporting it. So anyways, I'm done with my questions, at least for now.
And I think my question was along that same line, how, how big do we want to allow the, the equipment area and how high maybe? And as far as the footprint, I'm curious, Kyle, I don't know the restrictions offhand for generator. I mean, this is similar to like a generator installation. We have commercial restrictions that say the generator box can't be higher than, you know, 10 feet.
I'm not sure about that off the top of my head.
Well, let's, uh.
Has any insight on that?
Yep. I think it'd probably be good to also get some comments from the public and then we can address some of these larger issues. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to bang my gavel, open up that public hearing and I guess first off, we have received a comment, Jessica and Kyle, if one of you could save me some reading effort, that would be great. Usually this is my task, but if you want to read those into the record, that would be fantastic.
So I don't know if we want to ask members watching for comments first because I'm not sure if any members watching are people who had also sent in comment and if they're here to speak themselves, then.
I, I could go either way if, if that would be fine. What I am going to ask the public, if, if there is a lot of comment on this issue and, you know, we welcome that, but please listen to the comments that you've heard and avoid a lot of repetition if possible so we can, you know, get, get through the, the hearing and, and, you know, weigh the issues at hand. But if you hear a comment that, that's already been made, this, this board will, will log that and we can discuss those issues on, on their merit and that's just a, a request. So I will open it up for comment. Jessica, my understanding is you'll see the chats, you'll read them and then what we're going to do is we're going to step through all of these. I think that would make sense. Again, this is, we're learning on the fly here, but what makes sense logically to receive all the comments, log them or one by one? Is there a preference from board members? Because this, this is something a little unique. Any preference?
For what it's worth, Phil, right now the chat is completely empty. I've got, I've got nothing. So I'm not sure if everyone who wanted to have input had already sent Kyle their comments. We did encourage them to do so.
Okay.
Right now, I don't have any comments. So we could start with maybe Kyle reading in the, the comments we've already received.
Awesome. So let's, let's just step through that and Jessica, keep us posted, please.
So I have a, a few pages of comments here. So if everyone just bears with me while I get through, these were all written in email to me after we noticed for the meeting last month. This one comes from Madison, who says, I am writing to you as a resident of Orono. I live really close to 36 Oak Street and do not want a cell phone tower that close to my residence. The complications that it can cause to people in general are not good. I will also be having a baby soon and do not want her to have to grow up near a cell phone tower that can cause brain cancer. I oppose the installation of a new cell tower at 36 Oak Street in downtown Orono. Now, I don't know if, Phil, if you want any sort of response after each comment or if you want me to read all of the comments and then, you know, have a response afterwards.
I was going to log them, but we can, that's what I asked the board and there didn't seem to be any general opinion. How many, I'm just wondering how long that, you know, this, this will take, how many comments you have and then, then we can decide.
Maybe 13 or so.
Okay. What is, what does the board prefer? I mean, we can address them one at a time or just get all the comments, pick, pick the ones that, that, you know, that stand out, you know, unless they repeat and perhaps we can address them afterward. Do you have a preference?
There are certainly some overlapping themes.
All right.
Afterward.
We had a chat request to address one at a time from the public. So we'll, we'll go with that.
I'm fine with one at a time.
Yeah, so we, you know, we just heard the comment, a, a neighbor is, is concerned for, for health reason, reasons here. You know, we, we did get the RF report that the applicant provided that said that the, if I remember correctly, it was something like 7.8% and less than 10% on, on standards that they, that were required to meet. And we also heard comment that our town attorney said that we could not deny an applicant, application for a use such, such as this if, if they met FCC regulations as long as they had that FCC permit or whatever they needed to obtain. So, so given that, what, what is the board, you know, that, that particular comment there, I, I understand concerns for something new in a neighborhood, but what, what, excuse me, what do others think about that?
I hear the members concerned, the public certainly feel for, for that concern, but like you said, I think our hands are tied with regard to.
concern, but like you said, I think our hands are tied with regard to rejecting it based on the concern for health and because of the RF study's been done.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah, I expect this will be a, a common theme. So, so please weigh in, and anybody and everybody here.
Well, I I have great sympathy for this comment, and I've had this concern. But I think in this situation, we, we really don't have any choice. Namely, we, we can't use this as a criterion for rejecting the project.
Scott?
Yeah, the one thing I would add is I appreciate that no one ever likes to hear that their planning board can't deal with an issue of concern. So that is the law on this federal preemption, but what?
Dave and, Dave and Pat, could you mute while, while we listen to Scott, please?
We did.
Thank you.
All right. So what we, what we like to do is actually provide information so people know that they should feel comfortable with something like this. If, if not only are these limits very, very low.
So we can hear him.
All you need to do is mute your microphone and that, that issue should be solved. In the, the, the top of the screen, do you, do you see the little mute button?
It's at the bottom.
Okay, at the bottom. Yeah. I'm looking at, yeah, okay. So as soon as you mute it, we should see that and.
Pat, actually, you'll want to touch it. So, because it probably says mute right now. So you go ahead and touch it, and when you touch it, then it will say unmute. And at that point.
There we go.
You'll actually be unmuted. There you go. Now you're good. And then you click it again when you want to unmute in order to speak.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. Yeah. So, so in addition to the, the very low levels coming from this antennas, as you can see in the coverage report, there is already a tremendous amount of wireless signal in the downtown area right now. And that's just for Verizon. If you go to AT&T and Sprint and the other carriers, they would have maps that are showing there's the signal everywhere. So we're, you know, we're not going into this spot because there's no signal there at all, and this will be the first time there is. This is going to improve the, the signal, but I think it's important for folks to know that in the world that we live in today, these, these signals already exist everywhere. Everyone has to comply with these limits and they are very, very low. But the addition of this site is not going to significantly change what's there currently. And the other piece that is helpful is a lot of the issues with cell phones are our phones itself. And when we improve cellphone coverage, it, it means that the, that the phone itself does not have to work as hard to access the signal. And, you know, people have concerns about towers. They have concerns about their phones as well, holding them next to their head, putting them in their pockets. And when you're able to add sites and improve coverage, it tends to cool off the phone. So this is a very common concern. We never like hanging our hat on the, sorry, you can't, you know, regulate this. We, we think that's true, but kind of lame. So we wanted to make sure that people understood that the, the low, the levels are very, very low, they're well below the levels that are set with any concern. There's already a lot of signal here and this won't change that much, and it might actually help with your phone. So I, I hope that's somewhat helpful.
Uh, thank you for that. Other, other comments from the board? All right, uh, can we have the next comment, please, Kyle?
Sure. The next was from Valerie Wallace, says, hello, my family has lived in Orono for three generations and we plan to keep the tradition going. Please reconsider the initiative to place the 5G cell tower in the center of Orono. The possible risks to health are just not worth it. And I think we've discussed that this is a 5G tower and that the applicant mentioned that to do so would require coming back to the board and amending their plan to install new equipment, if that were to happen.
Correct. There was just a comment that came across the top. We might as well address that now. Something about, I could only see a portion of it. Something about.
I can see it, Phil.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sarah Kenny, it says her understanding is that 4G and 5G are very different. 5G is RF microwave radiation. If we approve this plan, it is hard to turn back.
Yep. Uh, okay. We, we are, just to be clear, we are voting on the proposal in front of us. So we are talking about 4G. The study was done on, on 4G and, and I understand the concerns. The applicant did address, you know, well, I think, Joe, you asked a question about whether this could switch to 5G. Yeah, I understand there might not be any plans now, but, uh, you know, you know, who, who knows what's gonna happen next month, but, but we are voting on the proposal in front of us. And if something else comes up and they want to switch it, they're gonna be back in, in front of us again for, for perhaps a, a different discussion or maybe something similar. But again, the, the last two points, the, the comments are similar. So I, I think we'll, we'll keep on going just to, to hear other comments as well. And Scott, as long as you two are paying attention to these comments, if anything comes up, I, I'd like you to weigh in. Kyle, you're up again.
Sure. Next is from Matt Atchison, says, Orono Planning Committee, I just learned of the proposed installation of a Verizon Wireless cellular, cellular tower in the church steeple at 36 Oak Street in Orono. As a former engineer at Verizon and former director of Otelco, an Alabama-based phone company, I can say with full confidence that equipment like that absolutely should not be placed in high population areas like downtown Orono. The long-term health effects of having a powerful microwave transmitter like that on Oak Street would potentially affect my family and dozens of my tenants. If your committee has the authority to stop this project, then I would urge you to please do so. Otherwise, I will need to engage my corporate attorneys to determine the appropriate means by which to oppose the project through the legal system. I'm happy to discuss this issue with the committee at greater thanks. We also did receive a letter from that commenter's, I believe, attorney. That says, our office has been retained by Matthew Atchison with regard to, of reference, proposed cellular antenna installation in the steeple of the United Methodist Church situated at 36 Oak Street. Mr. Atchison owns multiple businesses and properties within 1500 feet of this proposed installation and has concerns about the effect on his property valuations, and most importantly, the safety of his tenants, customers, and family. Eight cellular antennas being proposed at 36 Oak Street are no more than 600 feet from his personal residence and within a few hundred feet of downtown Orono standalone residences and businesses, including and customers, as well as residential apartment buildings and other commercial buildings. While Mr. Atchison and many others who will be adversely affected by this project expect to be able to comment and testify on this project, it is important to Mr. Atchison to express his vehement opposition to the project now. As you may be aware, the cellular arrays can produce considerable electromagnetic radiation, which in turn results in serious concerns among large segments of the population. Orono needs to be aware of RF levels at the project location. Compare those with the FCC maximum permissible exposure precautionary guidelines, together with routine background levels for comparable environments. Mr. Atchison hopes that the town will protect its citizens from the long-term non-exposures that this project will create and act with the public's best interest in mind. Science in this area continues to evolve and the need for caution is paramount on this important public health issue. Cell companies argue that these antennas are not dangerous, but many studies are not conclusive. Cell companies are entitled to good coverage, not perfect coverage. Sometimes a more suitable and appropriate location may provide slightly less coverage, but nonetheless adequate coverage. Interestingly, the petitioner's letter of April 21st, 2020 only addresses the impact on the town's infrastructure. It does not mention what is expected to be millions of dollars in lost property valuations in the downtown area, nor the health risks of, to the community. Lower property valuations destroy equity that families have in their homes and reduce tax revenues to the town. These are not desirable outcomes for middle-class families and small businesses. During these economically challenging times, Mr. Atchison, together with a group of other concerned citizens with whom he is reviewing this with, can be expected to close this project at all levels. William and Palmer.
Thank you, Kyle. Scott, do you want to address any of those specific concerns if, if they differ from your RF report that you provided in your application?
Yeah, and I, and I think, well, first, I think that the attorney's letter came after Steve's initial filing and he probably had not reviewed the RF reports, so to be fair. I, I think, yeah, that's, so that's new information. The only other piece that comes up a lot is this discussion about property values. I think, you know, the reason why a 200-foot tower is not allowed in this downtown area is out of a genuine concern about the impact of a large structure like that on residential areas. The, the, the fact that this is going to be a stealth site, you won't be able to see it. We think the only potential value on property values is to enhance them. We are all using these devices more than we have ever done so before, both in residential and in business settings. And stronger cellphone service tends to be a draw for new businesses and new residents. And so we think that likely it's gonna have a, it probably won't have any effect at all, right? Property values or property values, but it's certainly not going to hurt the property values of the downtown.
I do want to bring this up, and, and we get this on occasion for, for applications. Property valuation is not one of our review, review criteria. So that, that is not something that we consider. There, there's a lot of review criteria that is prepared for this board to, to look at and to weigh, but, but that one is, is not on the, the list. So it, it's, it's a common concern and, and this board is a volunteer board. We, we do the best we can at interpreting the, the rules that were given to us to make sure people follow. So we'll do that the best we can, but I, I did want to address that point. I understand your concern, but it's, it's not something that, that we can decide. Other comments? Kyle, if, if you want to keep going. Did I see a hand raised? All right.
Sure. The next comment was from Willow. I'm not sure of the last. I recently learned that Verizon Wireless is making efforts to place its tower at 36 Oak Street in Orono. I was horrified to think that my community could be subjected to the dangerous waves of the tower. Have been exposed to carcinogens in Ohio in 2010. I know firsthand the long-term consequences carcinogens can have on an individual, even if exposure is brief and or does not result in immediate cancer. However, this plan is not going to give off brief exposure. It will be a constant presence next door or across the street. I strongly believe that if approved, this plan would be the risk for the health and well-being of Orono residents and University of Maine students. Additionally, allowing this to happen would damage the reputation of our great community and its representatives. I would like to encourage you to consider the impact your choice will have on the people of Orin. Please also reference these few sort of danger of radiation in cell towers in residential areas. Others are embedded as well. These by no means are the best resources, nor do they include maximum amount of information, but I thought you might find them valuable. And there are a couple of links to epa.gov/radiation/radiationhealtheffects and radiationhealthrisk.com. And they finish, I have confidence that you will make the right decision. Thank you for your time.
Very good. Want to keep going, Kyle?
The next comment was by Roberta Bradson. Hi, Kyle. My family is opposed to the new cell tower at 32 Oak Street. We live and work, spend 99.9% of our time in very close proximity to this tower. Any information about the health implications from sources that are not affiliated with Verizon?
Okay.
Uh, next. I am writing to implore you to reconsider the potential cell tower to be placed in our lovely Orono village. The density of population leaves so many residents exposed to many negative health effects from these towers. As a resident and landlord in town, I would have a very hard time justifying this health, health risk to my family and renters. Orono is better than this, the health risks, and we do not need any financial kickbacks from this. It's just not worth the risk. Please reconsider. Many thanks. Carrie Dexter. Next. From Sarah Dyer. I have heard about Verizon's plan to install a cell phone tower at 36 Oak Street in Orono, Maine. As a, of Orono, I oppose this plan. I do not agree with this plan due to the long-term health effects this may cause for the residents and workers. Next, from Jacqueline Godet. I am currently an Orono resident and I am emailing you to oppose the cell phone towers that are planned to be installed in Orono, especially at 36 Oak Street. I do not agree with the installation of these towers as they can cause health concerns for the residents and workers of Orono. Please do not continue this project as it will negatively affect those within the area more than it will help them.
Continue.
That it's just the, the one project, that there's no application currently for other projects. The next from Valerie Atchison. My name is Valerie Atchison and I am a resident of Orono. I am extremely upset and disgusted that you would have this installed knowingly that this would be extremely harmful to people, including children. I am a breast cancer survivor and my husband and I have a four-year-old daughter. Do not want that antenna installed as it is close to where we live. And quite frankly, I don't want my daughter to get brain cancer or my family to for that. All because you want a faster cellphone service. I've heard that the residents of Orono do not have a say on this and that the decision will be made virtually, which is ridiculous and goes to show, show you do not really care about us as residents. Now you, all you care about is a faster cellphone service and money. Please, please don't have this installed. Say that while our public comment has changed from our usual setting that we are still taking public comments through these virtual meetings. The next comment from Will Melbourne. My name is Will Melbourne. I'm a student at the University of Maine. Oppose the installation of the tower in downtown Orono as it will pose a health risk for all of us. Please consider the impact this will have on the inhabitants of Orono. Very respectfully, Will Melbourne. Next. Dear Mr. Drexler and Planning Board, after receiving Mr. Atchison's email, I did a quick look online at the science on health and cellphone use and towers. I am forwarding a decent slideshow from the University of California Berkeley School of Public Health that seems quite relevant. Applying the precautionary principle, I would not want these towers downtown based on the significance of the potential risk and the lack of sufficient research to allow us to conclude that these towers would not enhance that risk. I would like to know whether this installation will be used for 5G transmissions at a minimum, just to play a board and list a committee of experts, including a representative, the main chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility, to provide it with a summary of the current state of the science on this issue. Sharon Tisher. And this is the last comment, I believe. Dear Mr. Drexler, I am writing today to send my concerns about power being proposed at 36 Oak Street. I currently live on Middle Street and am significantly concerned with the health risks that the tower can cause. My fiance, fiance is currently seven and a half months pregnant and with a new tower, I wonder how it will affect my infant with the research that I have done on cellphone tower and the health of citizens around them. I would like to inform you that I oppose the permission of this tower. I hope that you take this email into consideration with exciting on the issue. Thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns.
Who, who was that, Kyle?
Uh, I do, oh, sorry. It was a little lighter color. Silas Bates.
Very good. I did see some comments coming in that I couldn't read all of them, Jessica, but they seemed to be related to the letters. Could you, could you add the, the new comments or read those to the board, please?
So this is a Dave Mylan. They, Jessica's computer crashed, so she's in the process of re, of rebooting it. There is a one statement that came in on Facebook from our Richard Shepherd that says they need to find a tower that's okay to put in town areas, not that type of tower. They want to put up, they need to make a different type of tower that will be okay in the town for cell phones. That's my suggestion. That's my suggestion, one that won't hurt anybody, and I'll be okay all across the board.
Any other comments come in, Dave?
There is one on a Zoom chat from Jamie Comstock.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I can read that one.
You want to do it, Kyle, or you want me to?
I can read it. It's fine.
Go ahead.
Says from Jamie Comstock. "Hi, if the planning board does not consider health risks in its decision-making, does the city council have the ability to do so? I am assuming that the full council has final decision-making authority."
I do want to address that. That completely mistaken that we do not consider health risks as part of our decision. That is not true of public health. That's how the land use ordinance was developed. That's how our comp plan is developed. That's a key component of how things get put together. Not saying that all the rules on our books might be perfect, but those are the rules that were deliberated by committees and approved by council. And that's what we have to go on. So comments like, "We don't care. We're not concerned about public health," those are just completely off-base. And I would appreciate, you know, many, that you hold off on those types of comments. This board, and I know many of these people have lived in town for a very long time. And, you know, again, we do the best job we can. We're trying to receive comments so we can think about them and figure out whether this particular project meets our town ordinance. So other comments from the board? We've heard a lot about the health concerns, and I want to make sure that we cover this so people do understand that. But keep in mind that, you know, what we require is laid out in black and white, and an RF study was provided. Currently, this project is 4G, not 5G. I am not an expert, but the applicant has provided some information. If we need more information from, you know, from the applicant, again, they did understand that this, you know, might go to a next meeting depending on the direction we go, so that can be discussed. But I would like some other opinions on things. Mike?
There might be some clarification needed. It seems like a lot of the comments were saying, talking about a cell tower. There's not an actual cell tower going up. It's going into a current facility. So maybe a lot of the comments coming back, they were actually thinking there's a tower going to be, you know?
Yeah, we did. I mean, this was part of our comp plan discussion, too. This is just a little bit of past history. But one of the things that we were trying to do, that two-and-a-half-year process, was trying to open up different opportunities in town that might have been limited in the past, but which minimize, again, in our best guess at the time, that minimize the impacts on the neighborhood. You know, we allowed some things on the, you know, the Main Street corridor, you know, the historic overlay, you know, but trying to open things up because at the time, things were, you know, well, there were a lot of vacancies and some other issues. But those are the discussions we had recently. But again, you know, this is a project that we haven't had before. We've had other cell towers. But Kyle, you have, yeah?
Sorry, Jamie Comstock followed up her comment. I simply wanted to know if the city council has the final authority. And I just, you know, I had that the planning board looks at the application, you know, in front of them and makes a decision based off the ordinance where any larger-scale policy decision or change the ordinance would be made by the town council.
So hopefully that answers Jamie's comment. Other comments, additions from the board? What are your thoughts? I mean, we've heard clearly from our town attorney. Kyle, you know, presented, you know, the opinion that, you know, on the FCC guidelines and as long as applicants meet those guidelines. And, you know, we were presented with data. You know, again, how that science has evolved to meet FCC guidelines. I'm not sure that, that's not my area of expertise, but they have provided a report, and from the data that I looked at, it appears that they are well below 10% max, if I recall. So that's just food for thought. But I would like to hear from everybody on the board what your thoughts are. This is a significant issue, and, you know, we haven't received this much comment in a while. So let's make sure we discuss it. Mike, you weighed in. Joe, what do you think, Judd?
I mean, I think Krista put it well originally with the health concerns, which is, our lawyer clearly stated that if it's within the limits, that that's not a criteria we can use to judge this project. So, you know, again, I think we all feel for those people that have those thoughts about this, but it's not something that we can take action on. You know, people have threatened legal action. If we were to do the reverse here and take our own opinion about what we want to do here and not follow the letter of the law, then the reverse is true. So we have to do, we have to go down through these steps, and we have to say, check yes, check yes, or X, no, based on those items. And that's all we can do. We're not making up the rules. We're just following the rules.
Dave, do you have anything to add?
I think that we need to follow the criteria that says that this is not something the town can not approve if it meets the criteria, and it sounds to me like it does. I don't think we have any choice in the matter.
Thanks, Dave. John, did you have anything to add to that?
I think we need to make sure these people can see these FCC reports.
So again, and this is a timing issue because we were provided the material. I read it as thoroughly as I could to understand this. But again, all of the application material is available through town staff.
Did I, I have a question. So since we don't actually know the location yet of the exterior facility, are we actually going to take a vote on this tonight?
That's what I mentioned before, Judd, because there are other issues. We were addressing comments as they came in, but we have not addressed the location of, and, you know, again, agreed on the accessory structure and that point, you know? So right now, we have the RF study. It appears, you know, to be below the FCC standards by a lot. And that's one item, but we've discussed that quite a bit. I'd like to try to complete that discussion. And then we still have to discuss, you know, the location, whether it's inside, outside, those other items.
Until we actually know physically where it's going to be and have that site plan to review, which we don't have today, can we take a final vote on this tonight?
I don't believe so. It sounded like Scott said that if they were to modify the location. I mean, they're trying to understand, again, I'm not putting words in his mouth, but listening to him present to us early that they wanted to get a better understanding of, you know, board's concern, public comment, and that it sounded to me like they would likely be coming back again. And it seems to be the direction. Scott?
Yeah, and I think, and until we have an exact final location for the proposed equipment, I don't think you can vote on it because we're essentially saying that we know it's not going to be the plan that you have now because we know we have to move that onto impervious.
Yeah, very, very good point. So in answer to your question, Judd, yeah, they'll be back. Yes, Stephen?
Hi, I'd also just like to add, in kind of to touch upon a comment that Joseph made earlier, the size of the compound as it currently sits can be revised to include a smaller footprint. So it'd be, you know, even less of an impact on, you know, a location where, you know, we would move it on to the existing parking lot as well. So I just wanted to address your comment, Joe, before we, you know, before we moved on.
Stephen, I have a question for you, too. One of the things I was wondering, you know, you're working with the church on this. Have they weighed in on their preference? Are they aware of the concerns? That was a question I had.
Yeah, absolutely. So I've been in contact with Tom Moylan, who's on this call, throughout the entire process. Every obstacle that we faced, he's been part of the discussion, even to the point where we've discussed the possibility of relocating this exterior equipment into one of the, you know, parking spots in the parking lot. And, you know, they've been involved the entire way, so.
Okay. All right. If there are no other comments on the RF issue and the health issues, we do have some other comments. Kyle, just so people are on top of their game, just quickly on the, well, we covered one of the three issues. One is going to likely go away if they move it to impervious, but the discussion of accessory, could you just quickly summarize that to refresh people's memory?
Right. So the list of exemption, normally something like this would be considered a wireless telecommunications facility. That's the use that we normally consider. But the exemption in that section of the ordinance states that, you know, it's exempt if antennas as accessory uses, an antenna licensed by the FCC that is in accessory use to a commercial or institutional use located entirely within an existing enclosed structure. So, you know, the issue here is obviously one of the language that was used where, when the ordinance was created, we said, you know, antennas as accessory uses, and we didn't take into account any sort of support equipment. So, you know, it doesn't say that every piece of it, you know, is in accessory use. It doesn't say the whole thing has to be located inside an existing structure. But what it comes down to is what you consider that equipment. If you consider that equipment that's located outside of the structure, if you consider that as a use, and that use is wireless telecommunications facilities, wireless telecommunications facilities aren't allowed in the Village Commercial District. They're only allowed an exemption, and that exemption calls for them to be inside. If you consider that equipment as not a wireless telecommunications facility, if you just consider it to be supportive equipment, you know, like a generator or, you know, any sort of item like that that's not actually considered a land use itself, then it stands to reason that it's not a wireless telecommunications facility, and it doesn't need to be considered exempt. It can just go outside. You know, that's really the crux of the issue.
Thank you, Kyle. So thoughts on that? We hadn't really covered that. Joe, you might have mentioned one comment, I think. But what do people think about the accessory, you know, this issue? You know, whether it's a separate facility? Need your thoughts on that, please?
Phil, can I interrupt for a moment? I'm sorry. We've had another Facebook comment come in.
All right.
It's not a question, it's more of a statement. Town's hands are tied. Big business rules, big government.
Okay, thank you. All right, so comments on the accessory structure, please? On the structure itself, the height, it looked like it was 10 feet roughly, and that was why I even mentioned 10 feet. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct, Joe.
So, thank you. I was just, right, that was, obviously, the footprint and the height is the biggest concern visually, I assume. So, I think they're about the maximum of where we would want to see it, so.
Question for board members. Do you think it is necessary for this structure to be inside? It sounds like that's going to create issues. I don't know whether the church even has the available space for that. But, you know, any comments to that effect?
No, not from me.
Krista, Judd, anybody? Mike?
No, I'm guessing that Verizon or any telecommunications wants easy access to that facility. And by having it be outside, they don't need to get some, hold somebody in the church to get into the building. And it looks like, according to the blueprint, the fence is eight feet high. It says 11 by 15 by 8.
So again, the visual impacts are coming up. Scott and Stephen, I think you hear them. So that's something to consider.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think going with Stephen's comment, in addition to putting it where it needs to go, we should think about making it smaller and thinking about how to best, you know, shield it. I think some of the equipment will poke up above the eight-foot fence, but we should give some thought to making it as small as possible and doing the best we can to kind of shield it.
I would agree with that. Other comments? Sorry?
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Jones, sorry.
No, just other comments from the board?
Yeah, I went down there today, and it looks, it's going to be behind the church, between the church and the river, correct?
The new location, yeah, it sounded like wherever the parking lot.
It's really not going to be very visible to the public at all, only if you're going down there and parking your car. So I don't think visually, that's a moot point to me.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Steve. Yeah, other comments? I mean, do we have any issues with that? The footprint, it was smaller than I anticipated, but if it can get even smaller than that, I think obviously that would be a good thing. All right, you know, any other issues? It sounds like this one, we would leave, you know, if there's no other discussion, we would leave the, okay, so I'm seeing some comments come in. So we are going to leave the public hearing open, correct, Kyle? And it sounds like if, you know, once we gather the additional comments, then leave that public hearing open, continue on to our next meeting, correct? You're muted.
Correct. So it looks like we had two comments come in. One was from... So that comment was, "The consultant for the church, while the church can accommodate some of the gear being located inside, it would be it would be good to know what the board would require in order to change from the plans submitted." So if, from our, you know, perspective, from staff perspective, anytime there's a, you know, change to a plan, the plan needs to be amended to show the, you know, location of, you know, where the equipment would go, whether if the board gives the recommendation that it should be, you know, inside or on the, you know, on an already impervious area, site plan would have to just be amended before approval be given to verify that the location still met all of the ordinance requirements.
My opinion, after listening to this, it sounds like the difficulty with moving it inside would be a challenge. I don't think this board is, you know, we're not in a position to require you to do anything. We're trying to decide whether that's needed. That, you know, the smaller size, smaller footprint seems to be okay. Clearly, you know, we moved it so that it is not increasing, making the lock coverage any worse than it already is. So I think that's been cleared up, that it needs to move to an impervious area. Sounds, you know, that was a good analogy for, you know, one parking space, two parking spaces, whatever it takes. So it sounds to me, from what I have heard, that we are not asking the applicant to move the, you know, the accessory part of this inside. Is that correct? Can I see a thumbs up? We can do that this time.
Could I ask a question? So, since we have another month, I mean, would it make sense to ask our lawyer? Again, as I read this, antennas as accessories uses, I think the way I interpret it is, the only thing that has to be I think the way I interpret it is, the only thing that has to be enclosed and hidden is the antenna. I think that that's how I would interpret it.
I thi- I think that's a great suggestion, Judd, and by all means, why don't we use, use our attorney services to provide an opinion for the board, I think that's.
Right, like, i- if I'm reading this, because it definitely sounds like this is gonna get contentious, no matter which way it goes. So I think we'd want to make sure we have a ducks in a row, because I think it's all gonna revolve around this statement and how it's interpreted. And I think I'd want our lawyer's opinion on, does this mean only the antenna has to be hidden? And that this outside structure is okay? Or does this mean that the entire facility, or whatever we're calling it, needs to be hidden? I think that that's the question to ask.
I, I think that's a good suggestion, so again, for, for next month, Kyle, please provide the board with more information.
Can I make a comment? I agree that that's really key, and in looking at that language, it ends with and located entirely within an existing enclosed structure. So, I mean, we really need the lawyer's opinion on that, but it seems to fail. The way that sentence is stated, it looks to me like it all needs to be inside.
But Kyle brought up the point, and I, and I agree with him, that it seemed like the intent, because some of these things, it's hard to work out all the finer details, but it, but it seemed like the intent was the, the structure. We, we had one comment, I don't, Richard Shepherd, I think it might have been him, that mentioned, you know, a new tower in town, and that seems to be what draws most of the focus. So, again, if we have an opinion that, you know, there, there is some flexibility there, but again, it'd be nice to clarify whether everything has to be inside, but that, I agree with Kyle's point that I don't think that's the intent of, of the exemption, but.
I think, yeah, I think that's really the point, is that I think we have different interpretations. You know, one time I read it and I think it does, and one time I read it and I think, well, how could you just have an antenna and have it actually be functional? That just doesn't seem to make any sense, so.
Well, I, right, I prefer the board to have more information, and, and I think, Kyle, if you, if you could get us that for, for the next time.
I, I agree completely, but I think we need to put the question to the lawyer specifically. Does every last scrap of it have to be inside? Or can part of it be outside? Because, you know, it, people are going to be asking, and we need to be on really solid ground.
Agreed.
So I think it, it boils down to what you consider the equipment. If antenna is clearly, we label antennas as wireless telecommunications facility. And wireless telecommunications facilities are not in allowable use in the district. So if it's a wireless telecommunications facility, then it needs to be located inside so that it can meet the exemption. So the antenna clearly has to meet that standard, meet the exemption to be allowable. Difference is, you know, with the equipment, is the equipment considered a telecommunications facility on its own? And if it is, then, yeah, it would either not be allowable outside, or it would have to be located inside the church. But if the equipment area by itself with no antennas, with the antennas already inside, if the equipment area isn't considered to be a telecommunications facility on its own, if it's just some accessory equipment, then there is potential and room to, for the board to allow it to exist outside. So I think that would really be what we would want the town attorney to weigh in on and the interpretation.
I think this will help our discussion next time, and if we get, you know, some more information, I, I think that would be a good thing, so that we can understand what, what we might be approving.
There was one comment from Sarah Kenny. Can you clarify if this doesn't meet our current ordinance, this plan can be turned down?
Case with, with any plan, if it doesn't meet the ordinance, it can be, can be turned down. That's part of what we rely on staff to help us determine whether things in the ordinance, you know, meet, meet requirements before it gets to us. Kyle has provided an extensive review. I, I think we've received some information, but, but clearly the answer to that question, if it doesn't meet the ordinance, it could be turned down. There are, I guess, Board of Appeals, all, all the other processes, we, we haven't had to deal with those probably ever, since I've been on the board for a long time. But, yeah.
Seems to me straightforward, if it doesn't meet the code, we have to turn it down. Not only can we turn it down, but we have to.
How this works, so. Other, other comments? It seems like we're, we're heading for a tabling this for, or, you know, continued public hearing for next meeting? All right, I guess I'm, I'm gonna take a motion, please.
I move we table this until our next meeting.
I'll second it.
Very good. Any further discussion? We need a roll call, Jessica, please?
Joe?
Agreed to table.
Michael?
I seconded it, so yes, I agree.
Right, sorry. And Krista motioned it, so I'm gonna assume that's a yes. John?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Dave? Dave?
Yeah.
And Phil?
Yes.
That's everyone.
All right, well.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, and we'll keep working on our piece and checking with Kyle. We look forward to seeing you next month, and thank you again for your time tonight.
Very good.
Thanks for having us.
Very good. Next up, we have, again, we're gonna jump over the ordinance discussion for number five, new business. We have a minor site plan review application for a home occupation at Seven Gould Road to allow for a home office. If I could ask the applicant to describe the project you propose to the board, please?
I'm not sure the applicant is in here right now.
Do we want to jump to the next one?
John was just going to ask if, you know, John Dudley is the applicant, if he was watching via Zoom under a different name than if he could raise his hand, or.
I, Kyle, I think that the Zoom named client just raised his hand. Client is, are you John Dudley?
Hello?
Yes, we hear you now.
Great.
Applicant?
Yes, John Dudley.
Very good, yeah, thank you. Could you please provide the, the board a, a summary of what you propose?
So I'm running a home-based business, I have a FedEx Ground business out of my home. The only business activity in my home is restricted to a laptop computer and a cell phone at my kitchen table. All of the activity takes place out of the Herman FedEx Ground Terminal. All the vehicles are located there. They are loaded there, they're dispatched from there. There is no activity at my house, other than inside my house, on my laptop and my cell phone. There's no signage outside of my house. There's no maintenance activity at my house. This is a very minor request.
Very good, thank you. And Kyle, I, I agree with the applicant, but we did receive a summary from you, and in normal situations outside the shoreline zone, I understand that this would not be becoming before the, the board, because it is one of the, you know, I guess the categories for, for a home office. But because this is in the shoreline zone, we're, we're listening to the applicant, but it, it seems pretty simple.
Correct, so in the townwide zoning, home occupation is an umbrella use that breaks down into home offices, home workshops, and home businesses. Home businesses are always required to go to the planning board for site plan approval. That's when you have, you know, you're working out of your home, and people are actually owners or clients are coming to the home. So we've had, you know, people who work in medical fields and that sort of thing, that requires going to the planning board. Home offices and home workshops usually are only permitted through the code office and do not go to the planning board unless there's some sort of new construction involved for the home office specifically. But if it's just in an existing residential structure, those types of things don't usually come to the board. The only reason that this is before the board, it's not even for site plan review, it's simply because land zone has its own table of land uses, and it has a, a use called home occupation, but it doesn't break it down into those different categories. And it just simply, all home occupations are required to go to the planning board for review. You know, this is something that doesn't come up very often, so it's something that we could potentially look at adjusting later. But that's more of a policy discussion that can't just be done through the planning board. So when this application came forward, you know, it, the shoreline table of land uses required that it go before the planning board for review. I didn't, did Joe have a question?
I, I just wanted to reiterate, I, I sent an email there, I just, just full disclosure to everybody, John, John's a friend and neighbor, so I would like to abstain from voting. Very good, I had it on my list, and I, I forgot to mention it. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, so again, Kyle summarized this, and normally we, we wouldn't be seeing this application. And my question to Kyle, when I spoke to him on the phone, driving back and forth, and the answer today was whether this is an oversight from when we, we had made our improvements before, you know, to avoid these types of projects coming before the board. I get the shoreline ordinance, but Kyle, your comment seemed to be that, you know, maybe we could, if this is based off a template for DEP that we could, you know, partition them to change this, but, I mean, I don't want to get too far ahead of this, don't want to keep the applicant on the line, but those are my thoughts, that, you know, maybe there's flexibility for a situation like this, that, you know, somebody sitting in their, in their laptop in their kitchen that doesn't need planning board approval, so.
Right, yeah, staff can definitely look into the, you know, possibility of amending the ordinance.
All right, so we have an application before us, you know, we can get to that at, at another time, so Kyle, you, you can bring that up. Well, you know, we can't consider that today, but the applications before us. Before I open, this is a public hearing, so before I open it up to outside comment, any, any comments from the board? I, I got nothing.
I second that.
Yeah. Any others? So are we okay? Any, no comments? I'm gonna open it, open up the public hearing, there we go. Dang my gavel, yeah. Anybody online, Jessica? Very good, comments from the board?
Pretty straightforward, just like you said.
Yeah, all right, last call for public comment. Actually, I'll leave it open for just a minute, in case people are tardy, not that they, they're gonna weigh in on this one. Kyle, any other issues? I believe, are there findings for this one? I'm just gonna check my email, is this?
Yeah, there's, the proposed finding should have been emailed earlier.
Yeah. Get to the.
Yeah, I mean, the review criteria in the shoreline mostly has to do with impacts on water quality, erosion, wastewater impact on wildlife habitat and aquatic life, impacts to shore cover and visual points of access, floodplain development. So the fact that this use is generating any additional traffic to the home, and the fact that there's no new development, no new construction or impervious area going in, it really, it, it makes no, creates no impact when it comes to those criteria that are outlined in the shoreline zone section.
Very good, thank you, Kyle. Any questions, Jessica? Nothing, very good. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any further comments from the board?
If I may comment, I wish to thank, I wish to thank the board. It's a, it's a tough job that you guys do, it's a necessary job. And I want to thank Kyle for his professionalism and helping me through this.
I appreciate that comment. We're, we're in it for the, the paychecks, right? All right, so proposed findings of fact, then motion, that's what we're gonna deal with. All right, so this is one of the thumbs up, thumbs down, I'm gonna read through these, get a quick nod, hopefully I can see everybody, but again, if you have any, have any issues with, with what I'm gonna read, thumbs down, and then, then we'll, we'll have a motion after that. All right, so this is proposed findings of fact for us to consider for Seven Gould Road Home Occupation Shoreland Zone Review dated June seventeen, two thousand twenty. Pursuant to Article nine, Section eighteen dash two seventy-five of the Orno Code of Ordinances, Orno Planning Board has considered the application of Delivery Logistics, Inc. for a home occupation at Seven Gould Road, Tax Map six dash four lot thirty-one in the Forson Agriculture District in Limited Residential Shoreland District. Based on all evidence presented by the applicant, reviewing agencies, town departments, and the public, found the following, number one, water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation, that the project does not involve any new construction, and no negative impact will occur due to water pollution, erosion, and sedimentation, any issues there? All right. Number two, wastewater disposal, that the project will not need any wastewater disposal capacity beyond what is currently used, any issue? Need a drink of water. Number three, wildlife, wildlife habitat and aquatic life. The project will have no impact on any spawning grounds, aquatic life, or wildlife habitats due to the home occupation taking place solely within the existing structure, any issues there? So none, we have shore cover, number four, that the home occupation will not have any impact on shore cover or impact any visual points of access to inland and coastal waters, any issues there? Number five, archaeological and historic resources, that there are no known archaeological or historical resources, and as the home occupation will take place within the existing structure, no resources will be impacted due to new construction taking place, any issues there? Six, floodplain development, that no new, new development will take place as part of the project, and the use will not generate any additional traffic to the lot, any issues there? All right. Last, other land use standards, that the home occupation meets all other requirements of the shoreline zone land use standards, any issues there? All right, hearing, no, no issues with those proposed findings, I think we are ready for a motion, please?
Someone else want to give it a shot?
Your mic's on, Judd, let's hear it.
I propose that we approve the application by Deliver Logistics for a home occupation at Seven Gould Road, Tax Map six dash four lot thirty-one, with one recommendation that the applicant will register the home office with the code enforcement officer as required by the town ordinance.
Very good, thank you, Judd. We have a motion, do I have a, a second?
Second.
Very good. John, you get it, sound like it? So any further discussion? Seeing none, Jessica, could you please call the roll?
Joe, can you confirm for me that you're abstaining, please?
Yes, I'm abstaining, thank you.
Michael?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Dave? Phil?
Yes.
That's six in favor, one abstaining.
Very good. Thank you, Jessica, so this is approved. Next up, on new business, we have an amended subdivision application by Forest Orno Associates LLP for the Forest Hollow Subdivision located on Grant Road in the Low Density Residential District. Again, another fairly straightforward one, is the applicant available to give the board a summary of what you propose?
Applicant Donald Benson is in the call, but based on our conversation earlier, I believe he needs to call in via phone. You, uh, call in via phone. Actually speak. So I was given the phone number before, so it might take a minute, uh, or we'll, we'll see if it works at all.
Okay.
And Don, if you can hear me, if you were required to enter a code when you call in, that was, uh, in the email that I sent you.
Kyle, while we're waiting, can you?
Do you want me to?
Yeah. Provide a summary.
Sure. So, uh, the Forest Hollow subdivision is located on Grant Road in our low density residential district. Um, the original subdivision was approved on by 19. Uh, it's a 21 lot subdivision. In 2018, the applicant came to the board. To reduce the number of lots in the subdivision for, uh, tax purposes as I, some of the plots, I guess, uh, hadn't been built on. So it was to reduce the number of lots from 21 to 10 by combining some lots on either side of Grant Road. To create, uh, larger pieces of retained land. So on the, uh, west side of the road, lots seven, nine, 11 and 13 were combined. Uh, and on the east side, lots six, eight, well, 14, 16, 18, 19 and 20 were combined. Uh, the applicant is now coming back to the board, uh, to recreate some of those lots, two lots on the west side of Grant Road. Lots seven and 13. This recreation, uh, you know, it's amendment to the subdivision. Uh, however, it's recreating the lots exactly as they were originally approved by the planning board, uh, in 2006. Still meet the ordinance standards, uh, the minimum lot sizes. We've. The lots in question, one second, are both, um. One is 2.86 acres and the other point five acres. Both with between 180 and 200 feet of frontage. Uh, this meets the minimum requirements in the, in the district. And yeah, and also provided, uh, some. Soil test information just to verify that the conditions on the lot, uh, still met the standards of the original approval. Again, is waiting to hear back from DEP, uh, for their, uh, whether the amendment is approved on that end.
He's trying.
You're right. Okay. Um, but so the, uh. That, uh, the DEP approval, I believe last checked earlier today had not come in yet. Um, and would simply need to be a, a condition of approval. You know, before, before the amendment actually went through, but. The planning board can make that a condition, uh, and approve with that in mind.
Great. Thank you, Kyle. Is Mr. Benson available to, uh, add anything to Kyle's summary? Should have DEP approval soon.
So he is, um, on, I just provided him the, um, code to activate. So perhaps he might be on, unable to speak shortly.
Okay. Very good. Uh, so while we wait, do we have any questions, uh, for Kyle? This, this might even be simpler than, than the last one. Uh, there's not a lot. Uh, in, in my mind, uh, you know, it's just a simple change back to what was already approved before. Uh, any, any comments from the board? Anything that, that I'm missing here? Yeah. All right. Uh, I'm going to open up a public hearing and Jessica, you can let the flood of people weigh in on this. There we go. Uh, hearings open. Any, any comments whatsoever?
No, no comments on this one.
Okay. I'm going to leave it open, uh, while we wait to hear from Mr. Benson and I, I think. Then we can proceed, but right now we're in a little holding pattern and until we hear from him.
Who is, who is the host? Can the host unmute him remotely?
I think he's trying to call in. There's another.
He's been trying.
To us, um, the actual meeting, but he doesn't have a microphone.
Okay. So he's just trying.
Right. So he's trying to call in, uh, to participate. But we did talk before, uh, that if this was unable to work, uh, that he was comfortable with. With me explaining the, the project and the board acting.
All right. Yeah. Maybe we can do this if that. Said he didn't get the code yet. All right here. So.
So I provided the code through, um. Through the chat on Zoom. So if he clicks on the, the chat button, there should be a, a private message from the host to. To him with the code. And I believe that Kyle also emailed the full, um, dial in instructions as well.
Okay. Here's the question. So with, if that does not work, if Kyle's given us a summary. Uh, I'll invite the board, uh, public hearings open. We haven't had any comments. Jessica, correct? All right. Are there, while we wait, uh, are there any questions for the applicant? Okay. You see that bell? Can you verbally give him the code?
I can. So it is, um, after he calls in, the code is nine, nine, seven. Zero, three, nine, eight, one, zero, five, seven.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant, uh, while we wait for him to connect?
No.
Stay forward. All right. Very good. Uh, I'm, I'm going to wait to hear from him before I close the public hearing. Think that's how it should be done.
So I would just add that all the, um, buffers and all the conditions of the original approval remain in effect. So none of that is being updated or changed via this amendment.
Okay. But while, while we wait, you can, you can look at the nice sunset here, uh, you know, outdoors island. So it's, uh, looking nice out there. That's for your viewing pleasure.
I don't know. My favorite part has been John's cat popping in periodically.
Yeah, I, I was looking at that before and I didn't catch it and then.
Phil?
Yes.
Uh, while we wait, why don't we do the findings of fact?
Would that proceed? I mean, I, again, I did, public hearing has to be closed. Before we take that step. So I was going to go there too, Krista, uh, but I, I'm thinking that we actually have to stick to. Talk to the applicant, you know, if anybody happens to weigh in, then we can put that to rest that, that's how I was doing this. Kyle, what is your opinion?
So, yeah, I think the hearing should be closed before the findings of fact are done. But again, if applicant can't make it, um, and the board has all the information that they need. Then I, I think if that's what, you know, we have to do, then, you know, we can do it that way as well.
I'm okay. I just want to make sure that we have a, you know, a process that it is, you know, what we're doing is legal. But I, I was figuring if the, if the applicant had a, you know, was online and we could hear him. If anybody wanted to weigh in on it, we would receive comment, but it, I'm guessing we're not going to get any. So if people want me to proceed, I, I can close the public hearing and. And, uh, you know, if we have no questions from, from the applicant or for the applicant, that is.
The applicant may actually be able to speak now. He is no longer muted.
Ooh.
So I'm not sure if he's actually there or not.
Uh, we'll comment just now that says from the applicant, uh, it says, doesn't seem to be able to get. Uh, to get on the call, but he can text answers to any questions. Um, so.
Okay. All right.
Are no questions then.
Yeah, that's how we're going to play this. So any questions, uh, for the applicant while the public hearing is still open? Anybody? All right. Uh, nothing, Jessica? Nope. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Last call for comments. All right. Uh, I'm going to read proposed findings of fact again for us to consider. I'm going to ask you for thumbs up, thumbs down again, and then, uh, we can have a motion after this. Uh, so these are the findings of fact, proposed findings of fact for Forest Hollow subdivision amended subdivision review dated June 17th, 2020. Pursuant to article seven, section 18 dash two 10 subdivision review of the ORNO Code of Ordinances. The ORNO planning board has considered the application of Donald Benson. To amend the Forest Hollow subdivision originally approved in July 2006. And amended in February 2018 by recreating lots seven and 13 as they were depicted on the 2006 original subdivision plan. Property is located in the low density residential LDR district on Grant Road. And based on all evidence presented by the applicant reviewing agencies and town departments and the public, the planning board has found the following. Number one lots that the proposed amendment will recreate lots seven and 13 as they were approved by the planning board in the 2006 subdivision review. And then we take from the retained land area on the west side of Grant Road. Further that lots seven and 13 meet the minimum dimensional requirements of the low density residential district. Further that any future division of the retained land which constitutes the creation of subdivision lots will, will be subject to the land use ordinance standards. In effect at the time of the subdivision. Any issues with that one? Being none. Number two drainage improvement. The amended subdivision plan does not alter the previously designated and approved. Protected runoff drainage buffers that are part of the approved stormwater management plan. Are there any issues there? Seeing none. Number three, open space. Wildlife habitat, wetlands and recreational land that the amended subdivision plan does not alter. The previously designated and approved significant wildlife habitat buffer, vegetated buffers on lots one and two in the recreational path easement. Any issues? Uh, number four, overall findings as to the other elements of the Forest Hollow subdivision that recreating lots seven and 13 from the original. 2006 subdivision plan will not affect any previous findings leading to the original approval of, of the Forest Hollow subdivision. And will not adversely affect any element of the original approval, including standard for sewer water utilities. Pollution control, stormwater management and drainage improvements, uh, the roadway and traffic circulation or financial and technical capacity. Are there any issues there? We've seen, seen none or hearing none. Further that all other findings of the planning board with respect to this development at its meeting of July 19, 2006. Are unchanged and remain in place. Any comments, questions? We're all good. All right. Uh, hearing that, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Okay. Um, I move that we approve, um, the, uh, med site plan. Uh, for Donald Benson Forest Avenue Associates LLP on Grant, Grant Road, tax map 17 lot 58 dash 59. And tax map nine lot 18 in the LDR zone. With three recommendations. First, that all findings to the planning board with respect to this development at, at its meeting of July 19, 2006. And all conditions of approval and requirements pertaining thereto are unchanged and remain in place. Two, that the signed amended subdivision plan to include conditions of approval that run with the property be recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of approval. Of the amended plan. And finally, number three, that the applicant be granted an approval, an approved site location of development law land use permit. For the amended plan by the main department of environmental protection.
Thank you, Jed. Uh, can I have a second on that? Uh, thanks, Joe. Yep. Joe seconded that. Any further discussion? Jessica, you're up again, please, for roll call.
Joe?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
That's seven in favor, zero opposed.
Very good. Congratulations. Uh, next up, I want to ask the board, uh, do we want to push off the. Uh, ordinance discussion till, till next time?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
That, that was pretty easy. Uh, thank you. Uh, so do we need, um, again, a motion? So a motion to table that or do we just push it off? Cause was that a, trying to remember, we left a public hearing open.
Public hearing was left open.
All right. Let's, let's air on the safe side and, uh. Uh, we'll take a, can I get a motion to, uh, table it till our next meeting?
I move that we table the discussion, uh, on the proposed land use ordinance amendment to section 18 dash 130 excavation removal and filling of lands till the next meeting.
For a second, for a second. Any discussion on that? Uh, okay. Jessica, you're on a roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I think she said, Jed, yes.
Yeah, I did. Sorry. Dave?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Very good. Uh, thanks for, for that, everybody. Other new business, uh, just quickly, what's on the, well, we know. Two things that are on the horizon. Anything else, Kyle?
Uh, there are a couple, um. Conditional and after the fact, uh, things that need to come to the planning board at some point. That happened during, uh, the lockdown and when we weren't having any meetings. So it, they were mostly, uh, minor things, uh, so those can come to the board. Uh, really whenever there is an opening. So right now the only official things for next month meeting are the two items continued from. Thing. Uh, so it's possible that we could, uh, complete some of those kind of after the fact items. Uh, if nothing else, uh, immediate comes forward.
Okay. Yeah. I, I mean, we'll just kind of play that by ear and, you know, again, this worked out well. If we can squeeze them in and. We're not going to stay up too late, then, then we can, um, push ahead. Yeah. And then again, I don't know people's availability. Again, typically the, you know, July, August, that people can be scarce, but I.
Great. Uh, one other additional, I believe, uh, I got word that all, uh. The meetings through August, I believe will be remote at least.
Okay.
You can correct me if I'm wrong on that one. Dave Mylan.
Yeah, I had a hunch. What's that? Mr. Mylan?
No, I think he's doing something else.
Okay. Very good. Uh, so we'll keep moving on a discussion. I did want to point out, because we missed the meeting. And, and then time flies by and, and, uh, last month I, I neglected to, to notice that Jeremy Chubbick has. Uh, completed his term with a planning board. Just caught me off guard, but Kyle said we didn't, didn't have a meeting when, when his term ended. So I did want to publicly acknowledge, uh, Jeremy's short time with us. I wish it was longer. Uh, provided some very good discussion, uh, was, was always prepared. So that, that's greatly appreciated. On the planning board, uh, this is volunteer time and it, and it helps when, when you all participate and come prepared. So, uh, thank you, Jeremy. Uh, last up is, is a German. Can I have a motion?
I motion that we adjourn.
All right. Kind of second. Any further discussion? All right. Anyway, thanks for all the comments, uh, today. We're, we're working through this, uh, you know, doing the best job we can. I ended up using my phone to read. I ended up using my phone to read all the documents, so I wouldn't lose you guys in the picture. I don't understand that, but I'll figure it out by next time. So thanks, everybody. So we have a motion second, no discussion. Jessica, one last time.
Joe?
Yes. Have a great, great month.
Michael?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jed?
Yes.
Dave?
Absolutely.
What, what Dave said, yes. Yeah. Very good. Have a great evening.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
See you in a month.
Good luck.